I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which is safe, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
We'll go ahead and call you, order those president, Charles Vance, President, DB Barlow's
Commissioner. I need a motion to approve the minutes of the regular session of Lincoln County Commission meeting that was held on April 5th, 2018 at 6:00 P.M.
I'll second.
I'll second, in all favor of aye. Next, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the special session of the Lincoln County Commission meeting that was held on April 17th, 2018, 9:30.
Aye.
I'll second, in all favor of aye.
Aye.
We usually go to the, people sign in that want to speak with the Darrell and Jenna, but because Kim's here talking about some of the same thing that she is on, the public comment part, so I'll go ahead and let you lead off, Kim, and then we'll go with...
I don't want to talk, she doesn't tell me.
Oh, okay, okay, alright.
And I called Jim Roberts, and he said that somebody's just pulling your leg.
That's what I said, I talked to him the other day, and he's sure to be...
The same way you will get water on Facebook, Barbara.
I would get mad ready if you mentioned this.
Well, get your water, you're getting it, isn't you?
I pretty well told several people, if anybody gets it, you should get it. Kim, you want to speak?
Yeah, I have a few things that I'd like to pass along to you guys, too, if you don't mind, I guess I'll just stand up here, I've got a few notes that I have. I have some pictures of, my comments are concerning the Lincoln PSD, and I live in this Semerco area, and anyone that drives 214 is familiar with the slip in Semerco, that this particular slip has ruptured six times in the last year, four times in the last three months.
On Wednesday, it seems like, every Wednesday?
It used to be when it rained, now it's even when it's dry, so it's getting more frequent, it's getting to be a major, major issue, and I'll touch up on that. But here are some pictures of the slip, and obviously, the water issue is, you know, the road itself is an issue, which is, you know, the DOH's territory, they kind of intersect, in my opinion, but also, I mean, our community has really suffered a lot. When that thing busts, you can hear, you hear people say, "It explodes." And I think you can see in some of the pictures, there are shards of PVC pipe that lay down over the hill there, so I think that in itself is, you know, even more dangerous, but when it, when it breaks, it breaks, and it drains the tank. And if you'll notice, there is, the gentleman, I haven't been able to reach him to tell him about the commission meeting, but if you'll notice the one, the picture going down the hill, it, the cement road turns into a dirt road, and every time the line breaks, the whole large Semerco tank drains out of that break there, down that hill, and I went down there and stood in it, and there were, this man's driveway, there were, there were ditches up over my knees, so you can imagine what that's like trying to get in and out. He says his mother is not well, and it's been a struggle for him. But we've suffered for this, six weeks in the last year, four times in less than three months, during the last break, on April 24th. The minute it happens, I'm kind of one of the first ones that it hits, because my water's gone, the minute it breaks, it's gone. So I called the plant at the PSD, there was no answer, okay? So we all got our...
What time of day was that?
It was at nine o'clock, okay? There is someone there at nine.
In the morning?
No, nine, no, there is someone there, and there was, but I didn't get an answer. So I didn't get an answer, and there is an emergency phone number on the back of everyone's water bill. I called that emergency phone number, and I get, "This number is not in service." So then, I grabbed my phone book, because yes, I'm still old school, and I look up the chairman's number, and I called that. I'm, you know, kind of at a loss here, I don't know, and it was a Wednesday night, so the people that I would normally talk to were either coming back from church, or, you know, in transit, so I called that, the number for the chairman of the water board, and his number had been disconnected. So I had no way of recording this, the water outage. So then the water comes back on, when it comes on, and, oh, so let me, let me respond to this, too. It went out at nine o'clock at night, and they were there by 9:30 to fix it the next morning. No one responded to it that night. Generally, as a general rule, they're there and working on it, but no one was there until after 9:30 the next morning. So then, when our water does come back on, it's full of dirt, it's full of air, one of the girls that I speak to, we speak to this regard, she refers to it as a water hammer. Literally, one night, when they got the water turned back on in the middle of the night, I jumped up, I thought somebody was kicking down my front door, because the whole water, the whole house shook, the pipes just boom, 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 they just, I mean, and then, about two weeks after that, we found leaks in my mother-in-law's house, and we really didn't put two and two together until about a couple months later, and we said, "Hey," you know, "that had only, that had only been leaking for a short while," so more than likely, when they turn the water back on, because they don't know how to, or they don't do it, or they don't know how to bleed the lines correctly, and it creates these issues. There's dirt in the lines, I had replaced a kitchen faucet, a new kitchen faucet, so I'm on my second one now. My shower head, or my shower head is stopped spraying full pressure, because the dirt and the buildup and everything that is pushed through there, because again, they don't flush the lines correctly, and don't bleed the air out of the lines. So kind of, that was the breaking point for me, six times in one year in the same spot is a little much, and I do know there's a slip there, and I'm, you know, I'm well aware that the DOH is not the quickest to move on things. But that being said, I don't think that the PSD should be sitting back and waiting for somebody else to basically do their job for them.
When they come out and fix it, do they just, I mean, they just fix that piece because the slip, but just keep doing it again, is that...
If you notice, this was the most recent fix, and they would refer to it as cribbing, and I'm assuming in most cases, guys, cribbing is gravel and such, in this case, cribbing is bills of straw.
Do you know Mr. Halling, he lives up by the water?
Yes, oh yes, I know.
On that, when they fix it, they're putting a whole joint in, what they're going to put two collars, knock over the collar, what's happening when that slip, that pipe's a bone, it's pulling it out of the top, that didn't happen, it blew straight up.
Yeah.
I called twice, I done heard it blow up quite the last two times, it's blowed up, it's going to be inside out, 800 PSI pipe, going with 150 pound pressure, something's wrong. 850 pounds, it's a, it's a most expensive pipe you can put in, and a heavy duty, and it blows into a thousand pieces, blows pipe cure across the road and up the hill on the other side.
And I haven't heard that myself, but I have other people, I've heard other people say that, and it was evidenced by the fact, I mean, the plate is shredded, and I don't understand that, and my husband works in construction, he doesn't understand that either, but...
Kim, are they telling you that they can't completely do anything until the state road fixes the slip?
Yes.
Is that what they're saying?
That's what they're saying, but that's not what we're saying, we're saying it's not being repaired correctly, and the slip is not being fixed, and if they're putting anything to hold the water pipe up, it's not stout enough, they've bit some pipes over, there's some small pipes that drove in the ground, it's to the point now that there has to be piling drugs, and that's what the state road survey is going with, they're piling.
We went, when we went to the meeting last Thursday, I wanted to know why something wasn't being done. Well...
Mrs. Sattler, could we ask you?
Yes. Well, we're, we're waiting, what are you waiting on? Well, we're waiting for the DOH to fix it. I'm like, "You're waiting for the DOH to fix this?" I said, "Have you ever, ever thought about contacting a contractor and get an estimate, or see what a contractor would do to fix this, this pipe?" I was told by the chairman, who was not present, but, he wasn't in person, but he was on the phone, I was told by him that, "Well, we just never thought about it until you mentioned it." To me, that's unacceptable. There was an employee, two water board members present, and one, and the chairman on the phone, and this break, and another thing I was also told, I misspoke at one point, and I said, "So," from something they had said, I said, "So you're telling me that fixing this leak is going to bankrupt the PSD?" No, 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 I did not say that, I said, "If this doesn't get fixed, it's going to bankrupt the PSD." Okay, so how's it going to get fixed if you don't call someone to fix it? I had spent hours on the phone with contractors, DIA, the head, you would be hard pressed to find someone in District 2 DOH that doesn't know my name, and I am, I shouldn't have to do that, because the PSD should be doing that, and they're not, and we're fed up with it, fed up with it. So we go to the meeting, and we're talking about this, and other things come up, we asked about the water loss. I was told by the one employee and all of the members present that they didn't know what the water loss was, and my question is, if you're in the business of selling water, do you not know how much you're losing? If you were running a store, and you had, you were selling an inventory, you'd probably want to know how much you sold, and how much you had on the hand, so you would know how much you were losing, so you could make the changes and increase your profitability. Well, I was told by all three members, and one, one member made a remark to me, said, "Well, we wouldn't expect you to know the water loss," and that was the wrong thing to say to me, because, you know, I shouldn't know the water loss, because I don't get a paycheck from the PSD, and I'm not on the water board. So someone was either giving me the runaround, or they were, they're ignorant about the job that they do. I was told by the PSC family, I told them, I said, "I know from the PSD that it takes 10 to 15, or 10 to 15 percent is an acceptable water loss." At that point, one of the members told me, said, "Well, it's, it's probably just a little more than 15 percent." So again, you know, they told me if the, if the leak wasn't fixed, it was going to bankrupt, so finally, so finally, the pressure was on, and they did contact a contractor. We can't get anyone to call us back and tell us what the status is of that, I had to call the contractor myself if they're speaking with me. That's the only way I know something, I've called twice and left messages for, I don't know Sarah's last name, I don't know who she is, I've known her name, Sarah, and I've asked for Gary McAllister to call me back, and I have yet to receive a call back from anyone. I called there today, Sarah was out of the office Tuesday and today, so I have not, I have yet to see someone, to talk to someone. So not only that, but I've had to double check with Tom today, because it's something that I had forgot, I had it in my mind, forgot to follow up on, there's a fire hydrant that normally sits there.
Like a fire hydrant over the hill?
It's, well, who knows where it's at, they took it off, it's over the hill, it's not there, and my insurance, if they found out about it, you know, we know what would happen to all of our insurance there, it would be, it would be blown up. So I know all of, I know PB, Mr. Vance, I know you all remember well what transpired a few years back with the situation with the Lincoln PSD. The county commission had to shell out $262,000 to replace the misappropriated funds that was zeroed out for water expansion in our county. This was taken care of, and there were changes in the water board made, and the PSD was saved from bankruptcy, basically. The water was extended to a lot of grateful Lincoln County citizens, thanks to you guys. The PSD's made great strides in becoming profitable again, and then there has been another change in the water board, and I am hearing the rumors again about running people off, about things being purchased that shouldn't be purchased. One thing that I was unaware of, and I was hoping that they would make it tonight, that they had prior obligations, is there's a water tank in the Allen Creek area, located down Cold River Road, and it actually is the main tank, this is the tank that all the water is pumped into, and this tank pumps water, they pump water from that tank into all the water tanks in the community. I saw pictures and a video that literally scared the daylights out of me, there was literally water running out of this tank like a waterfall, they've known about this for two years, nothing's been done. These people found out about it, it's probably been nine days ago, they were experiencing all of these issues with their property, one woman was getting ready to fill in a $40,000 pool, and they found out, they went up and looked and saw and got all of the pictures of this, I mean, the damage to their property right now is unreal, and no one ever come to these customers and said, "There's an issue up here." I'm telling you, if I were these people, I wouldn't be living in my house right now.
So the tank is on the side of these people with the pool, we are talking about?
It's there, it's up on the hill.
Up on Eagle, but Curry, you don't know that hill.
Well, it's not behind Curry, but it's on, behind...
That area now.
Yeah, well, where they used to live now, where they used to live, it's back, back up there, and literally, it looked like somebody took a can open it, and the water was just streaming out, and it's just...
Right now around the bottom of it, waterfall coming out of the bottom of the tank.
Has anyone contacted the PSC about it?
Oh, yes.
Well, I don't know if the PSC has been contacted about that, I was kind of leaving that up to the, those homeowners, but I have contacted the PSC and filed an informal complaint, and there will be another complaint to follow, because, at the meeting, because the lack of any type of management that I see going on, or, I don't even know what to call it, I mean, it is literally unbelievable that someone would attempt to, let's call it a business, run a business in this manner. I presented the, that night at the board meeting, I presented, yes, with FOIA request, and you can see, I don't know, do you all have copies?
Yeah, we do. So you gave them this on the 26th?
I gave them that on the 26th.
Have I got anything back there?
I get to hear anything from anyone. So I come to you all tonight asking for your help, I mean, I'm hoping that you can possibly put it, that, make it, or not make it, but I know that you cannot remove them, I'm well aware of that, I understand that, but the fact that no one has responded to me with these FOIA requests, because basically, all of these, everything I've requested is things that show that the PSD is either being run correctly or incorrectly, so...
What's the time of response on the FOIA?
It's 20 days, and they brown it on it, and they want you, they want, they need, they want you to respond by five days.
We have to respond within five days, even if it's, if it's a ton of stuff that I haven't been able to get together, that I have to say, "I'm working on it," but she needs, she should have some sort of...
I have nothing.
Response.
And not only did I supply them with FOIA that night at the meeting, but I also sent a certified registered one that evening before I went to the meeting, because I wasn't taking any chances, because I'm well aware of how the game's played. Now, personally, I'm tired of my PSC being hijacked by people who have personal and/or political agendas, I'm tired of it. So I'm basically asking for your all's help in seeing that the public is supplied with the information that is rightly theirs, this is a public utility, all of the information, I'm not asking for personnel records per se, I do want wages and overtime, and, and let's see if it's being managed correctly, but as of now, I have seen nothing, and there are, there's, I know it doesn't look like we're well attended here tonight, but there's more people working behind the scenes that obviously have things that they have to do that couldn't make it here tonight.
As you said earlier, we're kind of in a situation here as far as the commission, we appoint these people, we can't remove them, you know, if you remember the last...
Oh, yes, I remember.
We've been waiting on some answers on whatever the engineers say would fix that slip out there, what they would propose to, what it would cost, and who they would do, of course, they went with one contractor, and Kim and I were supposed to be there with him when he came in to make his advance on what to do.
So...
So we waited all day Monday.
Well, no...
He's supposed to, he's supposed to have been there with a flashlight early that morning to check up the...
They called us Friday, and said the contractor will be there Monday to check it out. I asked for them, I asked for, I asked for his phone number, the contractor's phone number, and I was told by the girl, said, "Well, I don't have that, Gary's been handling that." I said, "Well, here's my cell phone number, you give this, my cell phone number to Gary, and have him text me the phone number of Mr. Shanakey," and, do you think I ever got a text of Mr. Shanakey's phone number?
There's a couple things I think we can do, Dr. Popmore, been around a little longer now, but we could call over to the state road, and see if they have any time frame up, and they're going to get up.
Oh, I know that. According to, core samples have to be done, and as of right now, now I spoke with the head guy, and he said he was going to push it through, and I was somewhat optimistic, but he gave me the name and phone number of the construction engineer whom I spoke with on Tuesday, Chris Collins. So Chris Collins said that as of right now, there is one drilling rig to do core samples, and that site is not set to be core sampled until November of this year.
And they talk to you all any about putting in an alternate flow there till they get that, that fixed? Because you're not going to have any more cold weather where they hit a wire and break.
The correct question would be, have we talked to them? Because when we went to the meeting, did anybody have any plans at the PSC on what to handle that?
No, no, the thing of, I took my son out, he's done this work, and he, Elk River, when it took the water lines and the water which are those up there, he said, "We prepared the slip and let the water line in." I said, "That's impossible, you can't do that, because I've worked on heavy equipment all my life." He said, "No, we didn't," and he took me out there to the slip, and showed me how you go up into the asphalt, and cut the asphalt, you go in, you put down matting for the drills, you walk them out, and drill for your, for your...
But they, they not had any, what, I guess...
Only thing the state gave was marked off where they're going to start core drilling, start putting in their, their...
But what I, what I'm getting at is, is there, does the PSD over there have a contingency plan to put in a bypass till the slip's fixed?
If you could get...
Because we're talking about, you know, core drill in November, you're not looking to fix this till the winter.
If you could get an answer.
You could, looking at it, they could put a bore under it, put the water line on the other side of the road, then bore it back up, next to the bore KK, Kim, nonetheless, bore it right back in, it'll take a while, I'll sweat, let the state do what they want to.
So that Monday that Mr. Shanakey was supposed to be there, I called him at 7:00, it was 5, sorry, 5 after 7:00, and I said, "Mr. Shanakey," I introduced myself and said, he said, "Well, I've already looked at that, I live right there," I mean, not right there where I would see him, but I was like, "Huh, when did you look at that, it's only been daylight for about half an hour, why use a flashlight?" So my thought is, he looked at it over the weekend, but we were left, purposely left out of the loop, they didn't want, they don't want us involved, because if we get involved, it makes them look bad, but if we don't get involved, we don't get, we don't get water, reliable water, that is. So I spoke with Shanakey, and then also, I've told, I've, I've heard from, talked to different contractors to get ideas of what could be done, and there's one says that they can leave the line right there, and do a special kind of sleeve, and use a special kind of pipe, but then, another person tells me, "Well, no, that's too rigid, and it would probably break even more than it does already," and then, so we go back, but Mr. Shanakey did, he recommended the directional bore, and to move it to the other side of the road, which there are permits that need to be done with the DOH, and I'm told that the PSD doesn't want to pull with getting permits, they just want to go ahead and do it. So that's the kind of, that's the kind of mentality that we're looking at, I mean, let's not do things in a reasonable manner, let's just do them, just slap them together, because somebody's putting the pressure on us now, and we've got to do something, because, you know, and I will not be quiet about this, so they can slap all the Band-Aids on and try to keep me out of the loop as much as they want, but they will see me in their dreams at night.
What's that mean?
And it won't be pleasant!
What's, you know, CSK, does anybody else have anything they want to add on here?
I'm just going to say, like I said, my son done this, and he did several kind of feet of slip and water line like that, and I had him to go out and look at it, because he's out working out of state now, he's got interstate beard to put in, he can't be down there, but he lives up there, understand, and he knows how to fix it, but the need to, he said it would take a week to put the piling in along the slip, and that's a week of drilling, it takes long on that, getting ready to set the drill up, he showed me pictures of how they walk the drill along the asphalt, and all those, all those mats, and they drill the piling, and, and he said that would take about a week with all the different changes you have to do to put the concrete down the ground and everything, but that's what they did up the route of Elk River there, and, but I'm just saying, when we put this water line through there, I was around then, and Yogi was too, and several of us out here, these guys were pushed to put it through it, it never should have went up that side of that mountain, it should have went across the road there to Buckeye Hawk, across and went all the way up to Harold Matthews Store, and then back across. There's, that up through there is a slanted road, no ditch line, ditch line on the upper side, filled in, there's nothing to catch water on the lower side, and you can go down there and stand that, just about that slip, and look up through there, and that whole mountain side is coming down, all the way up that guardrail up through there. So putting a new water line in and spending a bunch of money on piling, the state road's got to do it anyway, but the water line's going to break again, so I suggest we put the water line across the road, and I talked to a local contractor around here, and he said if he was doing it, he would put casing under the road and slide the water line through it, and he said they could go up the other side, I talked to the woman that lives across the road in the slip, she said if we got to put it up to this line on my side, fine. I talked to Kim Matthews, he said, "I think it should have been over to start with." And so I talked to the neighbors up through there, talked to regional banks, and said those properties above it, the property below, it used to belong to Kelly Tackett, I don't know who owns it now, but Kevin Daniel was getting flooded every time I turned around with that old water, I think the 150,000 gallon of water goes over right down this road.
And you know, there's already a right away through, you know, to go to that other side into that ditch, I mean, there's, you know, the state road right away, that was 15...
Yeah, I guess 15, 15, they, that's what the DOH told me, 15 from the center line.
They could have, the price of putting those two bores in, and the amount of pipe they're talking about, with the loss of water and repairs they've done, they probably just got them fixed.
Well, that's what, that's what I've told them, I went, I said, "Listen, this is, this is six times that I've counted," I wasn't counting before then, it's broken many more times, so by the time they've used the labor putting it together, and again, the polyp and everything, I mean, they, they could have already paid for it, but they sat there and did nothing. But they sat there and did nothing. And that's the whole thing. And my fear is.
You would never believe how fast that big tank on the top of the hill drains when that water line busts. I mean, it don't just, it don't crack down, it don't crack up, it blows up. And when it blows up like dynamite and all, and people said it sounds like a gun going off down there. And when it does, they said, "There goes our water again." The woman right across the road said, "It sounded like a twenty-two to me." So, I asked her Eve up the road, she said, "Oh, it sounded like a rifle went off." I don't know, I just know when I see pieces of plastic that from that big to that big length and all across the road, you couldn't stop, you have to stop traffic down there to keep the traffic.
What I'll say, let me say this, that this issue with the, the water breaking is just a symptom of a much larger, you know, issue. Um, because you've got the large tank that, I mean, could potentially cause millions of dollars of damage and maybe even loss of life. And so, it's, it's just a symptom of a much larger issue. And, um, if we don't get that addressed, uh, if we don't take care of that, I, I, I mean, ideally, I mean, I want the slip, I want the, uh, the leak fixed. But I also, uh, there's something going on that someone wouldn't come to me immediately and say, "Hey, I see what you want. You know, we're working on this, let me get this." But obviously, there's something to hide. And wouldn't any reasonable person, when they ask for information like that and no one is forthcoming, wouldn't any, any reasonable person, um, think that somebody has something to hide?
Well, you know, having dealt with Lincoln PSD for eighteen years now and the problems we went through, you know, that's, and that historically, that's been a problem.
It has. I agree.
But what I would like is to, uh, if it's our information, I'd like a motion to go ahead and send a letter to Lincoln PSD requesting that we have a copy of their response to her freedom of information request and that, uh, they come to our next meeting with not only that information, if they can't get it to us before then, but also with their, uh, response, uh, how they respond to these things. I want to see what they have in writing and how they respond to leaks and to potential hazards and things like that.
One other thing I might mention is that we talked about the water loss and I was told it's a little over fifteen percent. Well, I mean, we spend a lot of time doing this and you get on, finally someone found it. They file an annual report every year, which I'm sure you're all aware of and I wasn't aware of that it was available online. Uh, the report for two thousand seventeen, their water loss was sixty percent.
We, I know inherently, when we go, when we go back historically, when we went back and they were talking about water losses, they were, much, they're, they're, they're always water loss in system, but theirs always seemed to be a little high. But I asked for the motion about the letter. I'll second that and we'll send them that letter.
Can someone, can someone from the county commission, uh, let me know if there's a response? I mean, I'd like to know something before the next meeting.
Mary, you just, Mary's our contact person. Uh, but, but I do want in the, in the letter to include what, I need a copy of their response, uh, manual or whatever they have on the, on leaks and how they handle things like that. And I'd like all members of the PSD to be here if they could.
And there, there is some talk too about, there's been a lot of changes on, um, employee handbooks. That's one thing that I did not ask for. But I, I've found out since then, there's, there's been a lot of changes in employee handbooks that, uh, where maybe they're trying to keep things under wraps.
Well, what, what, the, the way I usually try to do things, I try to address the immediate problem we have and how to correct it and then look at how that problem developed and not get it taken care of so that we can change things back. But as far as the, you know, this is something that's, I, I think important when people realize that when we appoint people to serve on these PSDs, we appoint them hoping they do the right kind of job. We only know different.
Knowing that you don't have any recourse.
Knowing that, uh, when you guys come, we know that we're not good. And that's really the only time we know about these things, when it does happen like that. I will mention that, it was brought up about the two hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars that they misappropriated or we feel they misappropriated on there. Uh, I did talk with Mr. McAllister when we put him on board and asked him specifically to respond to the commission and what happened with that. Since he's been on the board, that has not happened. Now, he may be still working, he may be still working on it, but I have not received any response. But I, after the meeting that, that, when he was put on that, I did ask him, I said, "We need to know what happened with that money and I want you to look and see what happened."
Can I also get the, um, what the terms are, like when the terms are up?
That was going to be my next comment is, when these terms come up, we need people from the community that wants to work on this that you can trust to apply for those. Because usually, we may, we may, you know, look for somebody, nobody wants to do it, missing that.
Mary, two people want to step up.
But, but it can't, it can't be, you would be a good person to do it too. I mean, because it takes someone that watches numbers, that watches what the people's response to, I mean, you know, what the complaints are, addresses those complaints. And that's why we ask the PSD when they get here, is, you know, "What's your protocol for addressing her complaints?" I mean, what, how, not just you, anybody that comes up. You know, "What do you do to address these problems?" Because not only do you get into problems with them losing money, but as you said, but this is a safety issue. You may not have safe water if it can, you know, things like that. You may have this tank rupture and drown somebody. I mean, these are all things that need to be proactively looked at before they ever happen, so.
Get those certain emergency numbers activated though, where now that's one of the things that.
Well, that's the thing, that was one of the big things that bothered me because having been here before, we had ambulance services and I worked on trying to get all those put in. One of the things you have to have, if you call nine-one-one, if you call a number, you've got to be able to get a response.
You call on regular hours. If, I guarantee you if your water's low, they'll hang the phone up and put on a recording machine and say, "If you've got a problem, tell us what it is and we'll call you back," which they never do. But they will not tell you when the water, how long the water's going to be off or why it's off or when it's going to be back on. This is just to do, it's just on their part and they do it on purpose.
I think it's important to get everything on paper, just like we've done it.
Yes, I, I agree, absolutely.
And because when we go back, we may, you know, I may not be here, somebody else may not be here, but we can always go back and look at what we ask and what we ask them to do, whether they done it or not. But I think, you know, we will address this as quick as you can. Let everybody know that they're going to be over here next meeting, okay?
I will, absolutely.
And because, uh, these kind of concerns, because you're not the only one who has that problem, you know? Anybody on that line is going to have that problem.
The other issue is too, is that when they have their meetings at four o'clock, there are very few people that can attend their meetings to, you know, have their voice heard because most of them are out there working to pay their warranty. So, there's a lot of things.
But so what we're going to do is send that letter to them and ask for their response to your FOIA request to make you a copy too. And then we'll ask them to come to the next meeting so you guys can voice. And then we will also be asking them questions about, like I said, how do you respond to these things? And I'll ask for time periods. I'll say, "How long does it take you to respond?"
That would be good. I would like to meet face to face with Mary McAllister since he wasn't present the other.
Well, I, I think, uh, the election will be over within, so we, everybody should be able to make it, okay? So, uh, but now, uh, if anything comes up in the meantime, contact Mary, you know, if anything comes up. If you receive any correspondence with them, I'd like to have any correspondence that you have with them too, uh, for the record, for our record. So that when we do meet, because what, what we have to do is we have to make sure this doesn't happen again. We have to, we have to clear up what's going on and make sure it doesn't happen.
We're talking about public safety, the people, you know, but the, the plant, I, I don't think things are, I mean, you, if, if you have sixty percent water loss, you can't work on making your system better until you get things like that under control. And I worry that the guys are working in unsafe conditions and there's just so many things that just aren't addressed that we pay more attention to, uh, office furniture than we do the day-to-day runnings of providing safe, clean, reliable.
I'm sure, I'm sure the commission having, at least I know Commissioner Matthews did, you weren't on there when you were getting two hundred and sixty-two thousand.
My very first meeting.
Anyway, you know, they kind of had all their chances and messing up as far as I'm concerned. You know, and, and that's why we got to make sure we help them get in a situation to where they can respond to your all's needs in appropriate time.
Do you all consider it emergency on something? There's emergency funds that could be spent on water leak. How far do you all consider it emergency on something? How much?
Well, with that being said, I will tell you that Mr. Shinaki told me, when I spoke with him, he told me he was making the recommendation to the PSD that you directional bore underneath the, the road and reroute the water line. His words to me were also, "If they don't have the money, I'll go ahead and do it and they can pay me later." So, I'm not too worried about it and I have heard from other people that Mr. Shinaki is a very nice man and a, a man of his, of his word. And he told me that. So, he, he can feel, I think he feels our pain. He knows and sees what's going on, so.
We'll also, uh, if you don't care, it's in that letter, let's contact him.
Okay. Andy or, well, Andrew Shinaki.
See if we can get him here to talk with us about it. That sound all right?
That, that sounds excellent.
I just like to say, get a bid on the thing, let somebody come in and say what it's going to cost. And we've got the local contractors right there in Riversville and in Yawkey that can do this job and get that water line new. Contact, to me, the water line authority, the state road has their own problems. So, I know the state's going to fix the road, but our, we can't fix it and cut our water out.
And there's really, there's really nothing that would prevent local people that have, uh, equipment, that know what they're doing, from doing that. You know, because we do self, we try to, we do self-help projects where we buy the pipe and the local people did good thing and, and, and under, under the PS, like over at West Ham or things like that. And they, we, we provided the pipe, they dug it and they put everything in, uh, using people's own equipment and machines and, and them operate it. So, that's what we do when we get here. This, what we want to do the next time, if they haven't fixed it already, is we want, we want to get a solid idea of a timetable when that'll be fixed and how they're going to do it.
There's a good chance it will. Now, again, I hear a different story from every person that I talk to and I can't talk to anyone from the PSD, they haven't called me back. But I have heard rumors that Mr. Shinaki was supposed to start on it this coming Monday. So, if heavy equipment shows up Monday morning, maybe we're getting our water leak fixed. But that still doesn't answer.
Well, I think we will thank the PSD when they get here if that's been done.
Yes.
Uh, but we'll also address the other problems as far as proactively, how can we keep this from happening.
Why, why did it, why did it take over a year for this to get fixed? Thank you.
No, thank you. Appreciate it. All right, we'll go ahead with, uh, was there anybody else? Mark, you said you was okay with everything, okay?
Yeah, I don't. I just sent you a list and I haven't been here as long as I have.
Sean, did you need to speak?
No. Oh, sorry.
Oh, okay, I grabbed the wrong one, I guess. Okay, now we'll go to discussions, current possible action, Region Two drawdown and hazard mitigation.
No, I don't think so.
Hi, Lisa Wells here. I got, there's just two items here. I have the drawdown for the lower mud project, uh, for your signature. Um, it's drawdown number nine and it's in the amount of three hundred and eighty thousand, eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars and thirty-two cents. Included in this drawdown are two invoices from Shinaki Construction in the amount of three hundred and seventy-eight thousand, seven ninety-one, sixteen. Now, the first invoice, one of the portion, uh, one of the invoices is a portion that was included in the last pay application. And what we've run into, and this is solely between Region Two and the Army Corps of Engineers. We don't want to wipe out the rest of the core money, but unfortunately, there was, it was going to take a very long time to do that. They needed to do an inspection and a lot of other red tape. So, we have opted, in the sake of timeliness, since they are in active construction, we don't want to have any delays and anybody getting paid, we decided to take that portion out of the small cities money and save the core money for later in the project. Because again, a little bit of red tape, that was going to just take too long. So, the, the portion from, and it's included in this, a pay application number two of two hundred and two thousand, eight fifty-seven thirteen, including, and then now a pay application number three, we're doing the full amount of that application in the, um, amount of one hundred, let me see here. I'll tell you the total of that one. It's a hundred and some thousand dollars for that one. It's outlined here on the invoice. But they do total three seventy-eight, seventy-nine, seven ninety-one, sixteen. We also have one invoice from Ron Torre, an attorney for the project, for one thousand, one hundred and ninety and an invoice from Region Two in the amount of eight hundred and forty-six dollars and sixteen cents. Are there any questions about this, the specific on this drawdown?
All right, I need a motion to approve your request of any legislation, huh? I'll say that.
Take the second page, we have a basic drawdown too.
So, when you give Mr. Shinaki that two hundred and seventy-eight thousand, you say, "Well, we need another place we need to look at that."
Yeah, I saw it sitting here like, whoa, you think it's a busy, busy mess.
They said one of the workers towed it. They just said one of the workers towed him there. I said, "Well, I'll call Mary and then I'll say, 'I'm coming to that meeting. I want to find that.'"
I have been assured as well that you are definitely in this phase.
I think my husband's already getting so very motored.
I'd say, oh my gosh. Also, then from the hazard mitigation side, and I had mentioned last time that this was coming. I do have a resolution, um, with regard to the adoption of the Hazard Mitigation Plan update that was performed for each county and municipality within the Region Two jurisdiction. Again, here's the resolution itself. Um, the, the plan has been submitted to Homeland, US Homeland Security and FEMA. FEMA actually got back and was very impressed with it, uh, which is, I had another commission, many people were joking, FEMA got back. But they were very impressed and it does put the region in a very good position in case, heaven forbid, there isn't a disaster of some sort. Or it also puts us in a good position to get money to help prevent those types of disasters.
So, I need a motion to go ahead and approve this resolution, Commissioner, sign it. I'll say it.
And I might need Mary to attest to that. I think that's the format, or, okay, sorry. They're all, I see someone to attest.
Do you want me to sign it or? Is it to be mediated or?
It's just like somebody went and said. Yeah, it's, it's not a formal, no. All right, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Next on the agenda is the purchase of IBM nine oh oh nine dash four one A server with IBM hardware and software maintenance. Have you had a chance to review? Yeah.
Do you want?
I just, I just wanted to mention that I, I thought the, the quote was a little, a little bit high. Because I've just done some research on this for, for the server, for the server that I've got. And I have found out that IBM servers are a little, a little bit more just, just type of software. But, uh, I went ahead and took it by myself and called Robbie and our tech guy, Robbie Alden here. And he said that he would be happy to take a look at this. And if you guys want me to, to go ahead and call the software systems. He thinks that with, some, some of the stuff is a, is a little bit overkill. He thinks he can kind of shave this down a little bit. I, I was just kind of afraid of being gouged a little bit. I, I know right now that we can't really handle a lot of that gouging, so I'm talking, maybe.
Why, uh, I mean, we don't have to have this right now.
Well, I have to have something because the, the, the three-year hardware thing ran out at the end of March. And I have to either do the five thousand or the, or the whole thing.
It ran out in March and this is mad.
Well, I told her we were going back, so.
Well, I mean, I think that's all good, but I'm not willing to pay five or six thousand dollars more to get the same stuff or something. You know what I mean?
Why don't we?
Of course, we've got to have the maintenance agreement too.
Maybe approve it with no more than this amount and see if Robbie can get some of this price, price shaved off. He, he thinks maybe a, a little bit less of a, of a tower, the server.
Okay, so, so what I'll do is, I need a motion to go ahead and approve this pending his evaluation of, talking with him about that and see what the.
Yeah, if any.
If we can save money, we will.
Yeah, things will be worth it.
And not to exceed this amount.
Right, hopefully it will be less than.
Yeah, okay, I'll make that motion.
Okay, I'll second that, in favor of Sally. Okay, next, we have a, I put this on the agenda, Alan Holder, they, they had one of their air conditioning units go out over at nine-one-one. He brought to my attention, his brother could do that and of course we have documentation from Alan.
He got a different quote.
Oh, you got a.
Not his, not his brother, he got a different quote.
Okay, that's the one he sent though, wasn't it, to us? He said he found another quote.
Yeah.
And that's the one he sent and that was just to look at it, right?
I don't know, um, to locate, to ask to locate the problem.
A separate quote, we prepared with finding the recommendation. Now, what did, what's the commission want to do? I mean, I don't, the, the thing that I wasn't willing to do though is approve these monies, especially because we had the concern about his brother doing things and of course he addressed those concerns with the commission via his correspondence with the ethics commission. But I, I really felt that the commission, on anything like this, we ought to bring it into an open meeting and, and have it approved or not approved. It would, it would, you know, it doesn't cost anything to get a quote, I would think. He's going to charge us just to look at it.
This is just to figure out that this amount, to figure out what's wrong with it.
See what's wrong with it. It, it would be my suggestion that if, if, if the commission had a problem with Alan's brother, we could get a quote from both of them. And I don't know that we ought to pay anybody to look at it, you know what I mean? Especially if we want to get like a quote from both of them.
Right.
Do you think that makes sense?
Right.
So, so what let's do, if it's our, the commission, is that just have, and this has to be done pretty quickly too, because they, they don't have that air conditioning work. I think they've got other ones working.
Downstairs work, it's the upstairs, you know, it's all.
So, so we need this done pretty quick, but what I would do is have Mary get a hold, back and hold Alan and say, Alan, have your brother give us a quote for what it is and have Mr., tell Mr. Gilmore we're not paying to have him look at it.
Right.
That, that we will, if he'll give us a quote, that if it's okay with the commission, I'll look at those quotes and get them back and tell them which one to go with, so we can think. Does that sound all right to you all? I mean, to me, I think it's.
It's bound to get pretty hot down there with all that electric.
Yeah, yeah, well, that's the other thing too, is you have to keep those cool, you have to keep those, those systems cool and stuff. But I, but I think that's the most fair way to do it and, and plus, you know, we don't always, I, I don't always like to depend on one individual group of people to do things and, and there may be other people. If you don't, we don't have competition, the prices will never go down, they always go up. So, if, if we could do that and if the commission's okay with that, and as soon as I get those back, I'll take the lowest one and go with that, okay? Harts Community Center request, Harts has sent us a letter requesting, due to the cold weather they had for so long, that they said they would like to have another thousand dollars. Your electric bills, I mean, I think their gas bill on average is fifteen hundred and seventeen dollars a month, their electric bill is fourteen hundred and sixty-five a month. And what my suggestion, and I think Commissioner Harlow's and I have talked about this, we have, we have two hundred and fifty dollars in that account already for things like this when it develops, so I, I, I think if it's okay with you, I'll ask for a motion for that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Is that what you're saying?
Two hundred and fifty.
Two hundred and fifty dollars.
We don't have any accounts.
I'm still thinking about the PSD guys and I'm still thinking about that.
Make that, mark that somewhere, we don't have any account but two hundred and fifty.
And that, that money was a donation.
Right, that doesn't count, it doesn't count, it doesn't cost the commission anything. I was hoping when we get those, we could add numbers to it when we get things, but I think this is, this is the best way to do this stuff. And then we could go to our corporate partners and ask them for more because there hasn't been that many helpers.
No.
And I think that's something that I'd put.
I'll make a motion to give them the two hundred and fifty dollars that they have in their account.
All right, I'll second that, in favor of I. There's no more unfinished business or possible action. If one's a new business, you can look at the new business, Commissioner Harlow's.
I did look at it.
And if you don't have any questions, they correct you, I'll say that.
I'll send it.
And I'll second that, in favor of I. Hey, open discussion, do you have anything?
Yes, there's one thing that I would like to say that I just found out about before the meeting, got a phone call for Ferris Burton. I don't know if you've spoken with him or not, but.
Yep.
The Hatfield and McCoy, it was official today that the Hatfield and McCoy Trail System has been awarded through the.
Abandoned.
Abandoned mine, to purchase the thirty-two hundred acres over, over the ranch and Julie in there to open their trail system back up. So, he said it will probably take eight or nine months to get it all done, but hopefully by fall they'll be up and operational again over there.
Yeah, this is, this is a big plus and I want to congratulate Ferris on riding this horse to its, to its finish of this race. This was one of the bright spots we had when we first opened that system over there and then it became one of the darkest spots when they closed it down. But now we have it back open, so, or will have it back open and they do anticipate that it would be operational within nine months. I think they'll probably try to get it operational by the fall because that's when you have a lot of the riders, you have to color change and things like that, so hopefully, and I'm planning on getting ahold of the director, Jeff Lust, and talking to him about that, see if we can do something.
And this will be the first trail system that they have that they actually own, Hatfield and McCoy, the rest haven't made it.
They're, they're expanding in a lot of areas, doing a lot of different things and, but, and, and this one also, you know, we had it for four before, you know, most of the, the systems are only open to ATB, UTB, so it was something we could offer that a lot of the others couldn't offer, so as far as people wanting to know about different kinds of trucks and things like that.
I'll say one more thing I'll mention, please, I forget. The fishing tournament looks live, we're going to try to pull that off again with a lot of thumbing and begging and scraping around on June ninth. We'll have a commission meeting that way, right before, but it looks like they're going to try to, go ahead and sign that.
So, same weekend of the free.
It's the free fishing day, yeah. Yeah.
Okay, anything else? The only thing, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm very, very happy again to see that we're going to have a Hatfield and McCoy Trail System and that's going to stimulate the economy quite a bit. I mean, there's, there's multiple things, you know, I've, I've been really down the dumps about this whole vet thing going on and the fact I, I thought that I may ask the EDA when they meet with the group again to tell them our focus has changed, that we'd like to get our lost tax revenue yearly from them. Because we're not going to make any money otherwise and it's going to cost us that money every year, it's going to cost the taxpayers that much money. So, I, I, I'm going to talk with Larry Stutner and with the president of the, of the EDA and ask them to start that conversation with them. I talked with Zach Maynor a while ago about it, I talked with Delegate Eldridge about it and they're in support of it also, so, because we don't, you know, if we're not going to get any money generated, we ought not give them.
Ought not.
Right, right, and, and so I, I really, I think that's a way to go to look at something and maybe, because it's my concern that they oftentimes, having worked with the governor and administrations, with different governors, administrations, is that, you know, they'll have you participate in meetings so they can say, well, you had your input. Well, I think our input is we need to get something out of this, not just, we lost everything and we're going, we're going to go quietly into the night, so. But I think that's, that may be a way to look at it and I think that, I haven't had a chance to talk to Senator Stallings yet, but I'm sure he would support that too, so.
I think on the Hatfield and Coys, I think where Logan approved, they're putting a park in over at Logan, they approved the Hatfield and Coys Trail System from Logan into Chatham City, so that may have a possibility of, for that end of Lynch County area in the near future. Yeah.
Well, you know, that's the other thing is we need to market Route 10 as the closest western access to all the Hatfield and Coys Trails, you know, if we can get them to come up Route 10, get them into the county, coming through the county thing. But the last thing I have was, you know, I, I talked with, I think in the last meeting about how hard it was to do the budget and how concerned we were about public safety and things of that nature and how we talked with our state police about providing coveries because of the limited amount of resources that our sheriff's department has. And the other night, three Thursdays ago, and people that know where I live, I live two miles into nowhere, up in the head of nowhere.
Found it on the map.
Yeah, it's really hard. It will be on the nine-one-one map here.
I tried the other day.
But anyway, I happen to be really sick at times, I had a pneumonia and I was in bed and we had a knock in the back, at our, our back door at ten-thirty at night and it was a state trooper. And he informed my wife that they had a, someone they were searching for that was on foot, that had been, had drove into a house and stayed in it and then escaped from that house and they were looking and, and I just, I just wanted to maybe assure the county that if, if they're, they're being as diligent as taking care of me out in the end of nowhere, that they're watching, I think, everything that's going on. And I, and I really want to thank the state police for the response to that and I also want to thank Trooper Wood for being as professional and courteous as he was to my wife. I mean, he managed to tell her there was this man out and about without scaring her to death and that's, that's saying a lot when it concerns her. But I, I do want to give a shout out to Trooper Wood and tell him I really appreciate the job he did and the job that the state police are doing in general. That's all I have. I ask for a motion to adjourn this meeting till June seventh, two thousand and eighteen at six o'clock.
Okay. We're going to have to have another meeting before then, you think?
But we'll have meetings concerning the election.
They don't, we'll just have to call a special session whenever they tell.
Yeah, because we have to go through the canvas and then wait a certain period of time, then we'll have a meeting to approve the.
Canvas in forty-eight hours to certify, well, certify it from the last time.
Yeah, that's why you can't set a particular.
Yeah, you can set a time.
But what we can do is to cause our, we have to notify people that's having a meeting for forty-eight hours, forty-eight hours prior to meeting.